I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, yes, the school board will convene to close session tonight to consider employment of reformers evaluation that of any public employee over which they've ever, the school district, exercises responsibility specific for the purposes of preliminary considerations feature layoffs and staff reduction in hours, consideration of issue and some preliminary notices of layoffs and reduction in hours, and considering personal histories, a specific persons which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories. Item one, assistant track coach, item two, winter sport coaches, and item three, staff reductions. I don't have any guests signed to comment tonight. Before we hear the sheriff's presentation, I would take a motion to move new business item A, the discussion and action of the school resource officer, up to right after the sheriff's presentation, to be respectful of her time, and then she will be here to answer the questions that we have during discussion. So would someone make that motion?
I'll make a motion to move item A of new business ready to other presentation containing sort of the discussion of school resource officers.
Question to discussion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You're opposed, motion carried. All right, are you going to introduce the sheriff?
Sheriff. You can go to the podium, or you can go by the PowerPoint, or whatever you'd like. We have Sheriff Sturgard here tonight, she is presenting on school resource officers. She's met with all the superintendents from the county already, and we are looking to move forward the program for 19, 20 school year if the board gives the blessing, and she gets the blessing from her board.
First of all, I guess I'm very concerned for those that are lonely, and tonight I asked our district attorney, Cleen Nordean, to join us. You know, she sees kind of the other side of law enforcement in the county. I thought it would be helpful that she was along so she could answer any questions and just provide her insight as well. I did do a PowerPoint, I don't want to do death by PowerPoint, but I did give you a lot of information, and most of the stuff you're going to see in my PowerPoint comes from the documentation that I've provided you, so you can read that at your leisure. What I did is try to pick out, pick out the highlights of why we're here and what we're trying to do, the direction we're trying to go. The vision for effective school safety in Door County has really been a proactive and collaborative approach, and it's a countywide approach. Sebastian is the first district I'm presenting to, but Monday I will be presenting to Southern Door, and the following Monday I will be presenting to Gibraltar. For those of you that don't know, the Sturgeon Bay School District already has a full-time school resource officer, and they've had that for quite some time. So as you can see with my, well, kind of sneak with my corner there, from a sheriff's perspective, I feel that it really is a shared responsibility. It takes a community, really, to kind of help our youth kind of grow and develop in a positive way. But we've had a school safety committee, committee and partnership, and our common goal or vision, I guess, is to try to develop that safest possible environment for all students. Just some of the members that sit on that are from the sheriff's office, the Sturgeon Bay Police Department, the Gibraltar Police Department, their Door County Emergency Services, and then this, I mean. And I'll, each school there has either one or two, or maybe three representatives that come to our meetings. And then we also have individuals from human services, and then outside service providers that will come in and talk, depending on what the subject matter is. But, you know, we've, in the past two years or so, we've worked really on having command and control training for law enforcement, fire EMS, and then school staff administrators, and from my understanding, that's been going very well. It's been very helpful. Also, as a sheriff's department and as this group, we try to work with each other and help each other to assist creating our school safety plans and making sure that, you know, we're doing the best thing that we can possible with our physical plants and our environments. Each, each district does have their own school safety committee of some nature, and they're, they're always working on plans and for training and information to get out to not only the students and the staff, but to the parents and community. And also, currently right now, we're working on our unification plan. We're trying to get all the districts to basically follow the same plan, and then in work in conjunction with each other, if one school needs something, all the schools have kind of agreed to come together and help that school. And then what's new this year is that all the individuals that are on that committee jointly come together, and we are providing a quarterly school safety, a public service announcement of some sort, whatever's going on at the time. But obviously implementing it, Door County, we do take that approach of finding the balance between prevention and enforcement, but most importantly in my mind, we're doing it in an evidence-based approach. So we're using a established program that had, that works, and, you know, there's a lot of numerous different benefits of having school resource officers, and I just wanted to share some of the things that stand out to me. And really, first and foremost, it allows us to build positive relationships with our youth and the community, and from a, from a very young age. And then, again, we provide educational programming to the students, staff, and then our, your school community as a whole. As we all know, most schools are the heart of that particular community, and I would imagine yours is the same. And then obviously to provide timely responses when there are incidents of school threats or violence. And then really just reduction in having the youth enter the criminal justice system formally is really important, and maybe Cleen can speak to that just quickly?
One of the things I think that a school resource officer can help with is establishing a knowledge base for the environment that the school has, and know who the players are, know what the students, how the students interact with each other. When we get referrals for juvenile cases, juvenile delinquency cases, you know, I'm reading short reports from a social worker or from a police officer, and often the, or a deputy, often the deputy just showed up because he was in the nearest one on patrol, and he or she doesn't know the dynamics of what's going on with those students in particular. So when I get it, and I have to make a determination of whether or not to initiate a petition, a proceeding against that child, or find some other resolution that might be less formal than that, I, I don't have a lot to work with. So even if I were called an investigator or that deputy, they just know what they were told in those few minutes, they wrote their report, and that's it. I don't want to bring kids through the system that don't need to be brought through the system. I also don't want to miss those that do, because a lot of services are offered through DHS. So having a school, a school resource officer, and I can tell you with Rob Zedmilke at Sturgeon Bay, there have been several occasions when it's been very key. Not only can they identify and help me understand the dynamic, and perhaps help me with my decision on how to proceed, but should there be a formal petition or proceeding, they can also help me by updating me on how the student's been doing so since then in school, and how things are going, how the program, programming is going. So having that input from someone who is really right there, working with kids, from my perspective, would be really helpful, and me being able to do the most appropriate, address that child's needs in the most appropriate way, because we don't want to bring them through the system just because a police officer was called, if we can avoid that, so.
And then also to build stronger law enforcement relationships within the community, and obviously your school community. And then really, the SRO serves as the liaison between the law enforcement agencies, the schools, the parents, our human services department, and then other outside agencies within the county. I think one of the things I get asked the most, especially because, you know, we're kind of a smaller community, is what are you going to do, what is an SRO going to do in 40 hours a week, right? So instead of me sitting here trying to explain day by day, I went out and I tried to find what I felt was the best short video to explain the day and life of a school resource officer. I sit on the school board as well, so I understand probably better than the average, the daily routine of a school, and I think there's a lot of things that occur that people just don't know, because they're not in the school and not seen it. So if you wouldn't mind to just watch this quick video, it kind of gives you a good idea of the overall picture of what we're trying to accomplish. Now we have it up, and why are we not seeing it? One second. I have the play button ready, and now, is this big guy here?
Yeah.
I just had it, I just had the play button, it's gone. I just, it just went there. All he has to do is touch it, and it works.
Good morning, my name's Russ Swift, school resource officer here at the school, and I guess I'll show you guys what my normal day is like. Boy, you look nice. How you doing, buddy? High five, cheer up, it's not the end of the world, it's halfway through the week. Usually what I like to do is I come in and I, you know, I walk the halls and keep track of kids, and hey, Tyler, how you doing, man? You gonna play basketball next year? Come on, man, I need you. Anyway, I like to block the kids, greet them, say hey, find out what they're doing, sometimes I help them with homework a little bit. Yeah, just to make sure you know what to do about getting home, okay, love, love, know everything good, so. So, you know, you just, I try to be friendly with them, cause you know them good. Hey, guys, how you doing, buddy? All right, go put your stuff, we did get about 650 kids here, and most of the stuff, really at junior high, is you, somebody hit me, or somebody took my stuff, or iPods get stolen, cell phones get stolen, a lot of bullying, harassment, intimidation type stuff. How you doing? Let me see what you're listening to. An oral, let's do an oral check here.
Oral check?
Yeah. What do you got? Give me something. Give me your best shot. Give me something you think I'll want. You got another one. Ha ha, you rock, dude. Take a bullet, good man. All right, that's good. How's it going? You ready? Where's that tie? Where's that tie at? Sometimes there's traffic issues out here. I try to get people trained not to pull up out there on the busy street to let kids off, but it still happens from time to time. Occasionally, there might be a traffic accident. We had one a couple months ago, where a kid on a bicycle got hit out here by the front thing, but he didn't get hurt. I'm gonna give you a statement form, and have you just write that down for me, okay? And I will call, I'll put your hand, I'll get you down here, and I'll talk to you about it. Do the parents know about it? So that, the last to that student was, was basically a telephone harassment. Another student sent her a kind of a threatening text on her phone, and I've been talking to him about using telephones to harass and annoying stuff, so she had a previous incident, so I took, I'm gonna take a report probably now and document it, and I'll have to talk to that kid. Kind of hard not to notice it, okay? What we're going to do right now is I'm going to do a class on laws, rules, responsibility. We're going to talk about bill rights and constitutional amendments and stuff like that, so how it affects laws. Responsibility and laws and rules, our rights, the privacy, property, and, you know, basically our personal protections under the Constitution. If you know your American history, they risked everything, literally everything, to tell King George and the British to go pound sand. What do you like to do? I know you're a driver now. If your guilty is something, the government can't make you tell them you're guilty. Hey, this is Officer Swift, this is for the ninth graders, just if you guys could listen up for a second. I know you're thinking about getting your driver's licenses, just be responsible, do it safely, and protect your privilege. I know you see me before you practice school. Thanks. I'm getting ready right now to go get a full student from class that got in trouble on a field trip yesterday, and had a little meltdown. So I have a little talk with her about behavior, making choices and stuff, then get her back to class. So you have to filter your way through that, to try to convince them that you just want for her, okay? Bearing in mind, there's always going to be some tension, because you broke off a friendship with them, but he kept, but he continues to text her, he texted her for a while, and we told him to stop it, and he put it, and he started again. So what's the deal? Huh? You gotta keep yourself out of trouble. The way you keep yourself out of trouble is to think about what you're doing, think about how people are going to perceive things. Okay, what that was, was one of the, you know, students got a text message from a male student, and kind of what sounded like it might have been a threat, or this is just, maybe not really a threat, but uncomfortable, could be considered, you know, telephone harassment. So my job is to talk to the kid, find out what he might have been, if I don't.
How you doing?
Been lifting?
Oh, yeah.
You all sore?
No, I got a headache.
Oh, lift it high. A little, a little check on, flex up. What's that? A whole thing of vertigo. I help enforce some of the school rules and stuff. I'm kind of like a counselor, because I, I talk about things, life problems and stuff like that, and me personally, I can't think of anything more fulfilling, shorter when I was in active duty in the Air Force. I enjoy the job, I like working with the kids. This is a group, 70th and ninth graders, that need a lot of, I guess, attention and stuff, because they're still formulating their characters, and aren't really who they're going to become yet, and I see my role as to help them to become good citizens, and do things, you know, the right way. Why do we have a declaration of independence here? First, one of these things, it says, "We hope these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal." So anyway, I think the thing that's important to remember is that it's hard to quantify exactly what it is that we do and how effective we are, because you can't put it on a graph how many crimes you prevented, or how many wrong choices or right, wrong choices you prevented, or how many right choices my presence, or my presence by other SROs caused, kids didn't have. So it's, you can't put it on a graph, but I think we SROs working in schools are making a huge impact on the behavior of the kids, and helping turn them into good citizens. Maybe next year?
I know, maybe next year.
They got a new coach, so we'll see what happens. Okay, well, that takes it for my day as a school resource officer here. Now I move into my coaching role, and we got a basketball game, and so I'm Coach Swift now for the rest of the day. I use my time after I get off duty to coach these guys, and hopefully we'll get a win for our first night. Take care.
So that's, that's really just kind of a basic day in the life, and I think the schools are all pretty similar. A lot of schools face the same issues, the same concerns. But I just think of, you know, what the gentleman says at the end is, when somebody asks me that question, what is somebody going to do with 40 hours? How do you quantify? Because one child's situation that they're dealing with realistically could tie that officer up for a full day. There's a lot of unknowns. I can't stand up here and I won't stand up here and tell you that I know how they're going to spend all of their 40 hours, but I can tell you that they will be invested in your school, they will become part of your school community, and I strongly believe that they will make a difference in your school. That's why I'm standing in front of you today. If I could quantify it for you, I would. Nobody's found that magic thing to have to do that, but. What are our school resource officers? Obviously, it's prevention and early prevention, and it's really shifting the mindset of law enforcement as well, to become less reactive and more proactive, and really identifying and altering the conditions that exist inside of a school to make it the safest as you can. I have a couple friends that have been school resource officers in different districts, and in talking to them, they say realistically, probably 95% of the things they do are proactive, and 5% are reactive, so enforcement type things. We are going to try to follow the best standard, and that's the National Association of School Resource Officers. I can't, I gave you that in my handout, but it's a tryout approach, and really, the gentleman in the video spoke a little bit about it. A school resource officer plays a role in a lot of different areas, but really, they're an informal counselor, they're an educator, and then obviously a law enforcement officer. And, you know, the kind of, I like, it's really the kind of relationships that the school resource, resource officers forge with the teachers and students, rather than the number of arrests they make, promote school safety, and I would say I gave you the quote there. And that's where I'm coming from, and that's why I want you to understand that I don't want officers in the school to be arresting kids. Whether we have SROs or not, are you going to have situations where students are going to need to be arrested? Absolutely. So either way, there's going to be times when there's officers in your school. I see this approach, this approach as a more effective approach, because when those situations do occur, hopefully the officer will avoid most of those and catch it early, but when they do have to deal with it, it'll be hopefully less disruptive, and there's those relationships built ahead of time. But some of the areas that SROs mentor in are, you know, kids have relationship issues, they oftentimes have family dynamics going on, sometimes they struggle with self-esteem, especially that middle school age. And unfortunately, there are students that have substance abuse issues either themselves or within their household that affect them. And then probably the biggest thing on the rise that we see in law enforcement as a whole is, and I'm thinking in schools you see that as well, is just the mental health issues. And then just trying to help people make better decisions, I think that's a key role. And then obviously as an educator, you know, they, as the officer said, you know, they're going to end up educating their students, basically, each, there's not a cookie cutter program, so each school, the unique thing here is, you're going to be able to help develop what that SRO program looks like in your own individual school. So the areas that concern your district are the areas that our officers will be working with you to address. But some of the pretty common stuff that they talk about with the students is, you know, their, the school safety, but their personal safety as well, and then just proper use of internet tech, uh, technology and internet safety. And I think Mr. Nordean can speak just quickly about the rise that we're seeing in the lack of guidance or information around the use of technology with students?
Yeah, I, well, I think we all know that every, most all these kids, at least at the high school level, have devices, and on those devices they've got access to the world, and they do so much with their communicating on the devices. But where we're seeing children become victims or become aggressors in bullying and things online, are, is really the use of that phone and it, and them not understanding the dangers that it poses, whether it's not understanding that there are adults out there that are communicating with them, that are predators to, to, not, I can't think of a better word than that. But also, I went at least to Southern Door and to some of the other schools in Sturgeon Bay, and talked about the importance of them thinking about what they post online, and thinking about the things at this stage, because we've had a rise in, either school threats or violent statements made by students online, and whether it's a friend seeing that post and reporting it to a teacher, or a parent, or whoever that might be right away, law enforcement, knowing that they need to tell somebody about that, or the student making a post that they may not mean, but needs to be taken seriously in this day and age. And I think in 2017 and 18, we had some type of threat, and I use that term to include a few different types of things, but some type of online threat at each of the schools. So teaching the kids how important it is to be careful with what they are doing themselves, how to report what they see, and then how to keep themselves safe online, I think is key here. I think that's where, listening to their parents isn't always as cool as maybe hearing it from a resource officer.
And then obviously the drug, alcohol, tobacco, and the newest thing we're kind of dealing with is vaping. And then just harassment, anti-bullying type subject areas, and then really trying to teach students resilience. There's a really innovative program that's coming, and it's actually coming to Wisconsin and the Midwest. It's called Core Matters, and it really focuses on resilience with kids and building that, and it doesn't focus, similar to like DARE, is really focused at the fifth grade level. This new program basically has curriculum at every, every level in your school, so. And then obviously the driver safety type stuff, and then again, whatever your school approaches the SRO on, they will research it, they will find the best way to approach it, and then help to get education on that. And then really, most importantly, they're also here as part of your community, and doing community presentations and parent presentations is going to be part of their role as well, moving forward. I just wanted to share a little background with you. So the calls for service to the different school districts, now these numbers are lumped together, and they're hard to see. I can't even see them from up there, from back there. But what we have seen is an increase in calls for service to the different districts, and that's all districts, it's not unique to one. And then really the severity of the calls are increasing. So where it may, it might have been just a simple fact, now we're responding for, as Mr. Nordean said, threats, battery, all different kinds of things that, you know, go back to, you know, 2014, 15, we really weren't seeing those things. And then the length of time that the officers are spending at the school, just because the issue itself is complex, and they're wanting to do their best to help you guys as a district as well. But at any given time, depending on the time of the year, Door County may only have three officers on the road, so if someone is tied up in a school, that leaves two officers to cover the entire county. So that's, the reason for the SRO is partly driven by our numbers and our need to take a little different approach on it. And then, and then just the follow-up that's required, that, you know, the cases that Mr. Nordean spoke about, you know, that's a week's worth of investigation when there's a school threat, and so it's just, trying to, I don't want, I don't want using to scare people, because that's not what I'm trying to do, but I'm trying to tell you there is a clear trend moving forward and moving upward, and not just in Door County, but, you know, throughout the whole nation, so.
I was just gonna come back to something you said earlier. The, the point though, and correct me if I'm wrong, is of a school resource officer, is not to, like, I think parents or teachers might envision like an officer running through with a canine, like, sniffing all the lockers every single day, and looking for, looking to catch kids doing things wrong, and that is not the point. The point is, I think the focus is on those first two, the educating and the counselor and the proactive nature, but certainly having somebody on site if something happens, when something happens, is, is helpful. But it's, it's not to be out there catching kids doing things wrong.
Correct, like I alluded to before, I mean, there are going to be occasions where kids' behavior is going to justify an arrest, but that would happen whether you have an SRO or not, right? And then this is just kind of gives you a general idea of, these are the offenses that over the last five years, again, I apologize because the screen's a little ways away, but just the, the numbers of the referrals.
So the blue is that juvenile referrals, so that's when it gets to the point of being referred to the DA's office or to the Department of Human Services. The green is citations issued. That would be like where an arrest is made, or a student is actually cited, and would likely have a fine or something. And then the yellow is juvenile related calls.
And then on the left-hand side of the screen, I just kind of gave you an idea of some of the things that, where those numbers kind of come from. And again, the thing to remember with, not all calls that are made to the school are necessarily reflected in this number, because, for example, if we have Jim Rodney here, and he's walking through the hall, and a, a teacher asks him to speak to a student, we're not recording that as an incident, but they're interacting with the children. Same thing, our current investigator, Neville, you know, he receives a lot of calls from superintendents or principals, and tries to handle a lot of the things over the phone, and try to resolve them that way. And just to give you an outside perspective, the SRO program is not something that the new sheriff of Door County wants to come in and, you know, be innovative. It's something that, you know, in my mind, we are a little bit behind the times in. And then speaking with our neighboring sheriff, Matt Joskey, and I asked him if he could give me, you know, his thoughts on it, and he was welcome to be able to share his thoughts, and, you know, basically, I'll just give you a second to read that, but I think pretty much any law enforcement administrator feels the same. In the world we live in today, it is our responsibility, and we have to try to do something to change the direction of where we're going. And it's in your pack, if you want to read it too. And then I guess the, the other part is, people ask me, well, how do you select the officers? I shouldn't have done that in red, because from this car, I can't see it, but. The SRO programs, you know, they're, they're built, the selection, what you're looking for first and foremost is qualified law enforcement officers. Then you're looking for peoples that are willing and have the ability to work with youth and educators, and law enforcement officers, I would say, were unique breed. Not everybody wants to work with the youth, but there are some that just stand out and do a really great job in that area. So for them to be effective, they need to be motivated, and they need to look at stuff from a proactive standpoint, and then build those relationships. from a proactive standpoint and then build those relationships with your school community and everybody in there. So what we did, uh, so we had a unique thing, um, the school resource, basic school resource officer training usually is held by the state, but it was held in Brown County this current week. So we went through the process, I went through the first step at the county level to get approval to move forward, to bring it to the school boards, so that's why I'm here today. With that, I did, we did set up an interview process and a panel of people to interview the interested deputies or officers. And that panel basically consisted of law enforcement leaders from my agency, all three school administrators and a principal. And then I brought in an experienced school resource officer from another outside rural district to sit on the panel. And they basically were required to do a 10-minute presentation as to what is a school resource officer and how they see themselves fitting. And then they went through a series of questions. After that, the SROs, it's important to know that those are appointed positions, so they're not based on seniority. So that gives me, the sheriff, the ability to really select the best candidates possible. So I, I sat in the interview as well, it was kind of a unique way, I had to do it through Skype, but we ended up doing it. And then everybody kind of talked through it after and we kind of came to the conclusion and we did make our selections pending a final approval of all the boards. But those three individuals are currently this week attending basic SRO. In the end, if this does not work out for one or more of the districts or for the county, we still have three officers that are better trained to deal with youth, so it's a win for me, so. Again, there, there are school assignments, you know, they're gonna be based on numerous factors, and that's where myself and the school administrators will sit down and work together to say which officer would be assigned to which school. The only caveat that I have as sheriff is, I, I won't put an officer in school, in a school that their children attend or their spouse works in. So that's really the only thing that I, I believe strongly in. And then again, just some examples of their specialized training, um, they're attending the resource officer training today, there's school threat assessments, there's youth mental health they'll have to attend, there's youth-focused trauma-informed care. Forensics interviewing is huge, especially from victims of sexual assault, child abuse. And having certain individuals trained, and more than one in our county trained to do that is gonna be extremely important. They'll have to stay up on the technology trends and how to address those with the young people. And then really ongoing education relating to our youth. Again, it's a huge investment, their training. I am not asking the school districts to invest in the training. As the sheriff, I will absorb all of the training cost for the individuals. And this is probably what we just want to know, the fiscal impact, and this is would be for a one full-time school resource officer in your district. The proposal that I made to both the county and your school administrators was that the school districts would cost, would cover 80% and the sheriff's office would cover 20% of the SRO salary and benefits. But it's important to know that that 80% is only based on the time, the nine months that they're spent in the school. The remainder of that officer's annual salary would be covered by the sheriff's department. So I'm just asking for the hours reimbursed from the school at 80%. A lot of people ask, well, what are other districts doing? And really it depends on the district. Some require the, or some will require the school district to pay it all, some do 75-25, some do 80, it really depends. But why I felt 80-20 was important after talking to the administrators is, I wanna make sure that you guys understand that as the sheriff and as the county, we are invested in this as well. It is gonna be a team effort. So we wanna do our part, and again, we have to still pick up the remainder of the salary for the rest of the year, so. And then one of the things that I did require in the job posting is that they are going to spend extra time, four to six hours monthly, attending extracurricular activities, and that is also included in the figure, it's not extra for you, you won't get those extra. I think it helps build relationships, get some, you know, face time with the parents and so on and so forth. And for the most part, the SRO will be in the school whenever the school's in session. And then on in-service days, that's gonna be between the administrator and the school, well, the SRO and administrator kind of work out, do they want them to present to the staff or do they want them in the building because you're gonna have an influx of people? But basically, that's something they would work out. But for the most part, again, the 20% is because there are gonna be occasions where if there's an emergency situation from your general vicinity, we may have to pull that person to respond. They also are gonna have to attend a, some training throughout the year. The good thing about the SRO training is most of it is held in the summer, knowing that the schools don't want their officers gone. But on occasion, it, it may happen. And then obviously, just like any employee, they, they have illnesses or, you know, vacation. What I did is limit their vacation, so they're only allowed to take five days of vacation during the school calendar year. And my plan for that is to backfill with probably Mr. Brown, if he's available and willing to do that. But as you all know, I have to negotiate with union contracts, so I had to be somewhat fair and allow them some vacation. Other things would be, where they would be leaving the school is if they have to testify in a case that came out of this school district, obviously all those things occur during the day. Again, I will try my best to have backfill in those situations, but I really don't anticipate that happening much throughout the year with the staff. And what I'm asking is that you would enter into a three-year agreement for purchase of services with the sheriff's office. It's, in my understanding, all three of the districts that I'll be presenting to use the same law firm, so reviewing that agreement, hopefully can be done jointly and hopefully the costs can be split between the districts. That is drafted and written, but until I figured out what the schools want and I didn't present that, but my thought would be that then if it's approved, I would work with your administrator and we would work through that. Again, we both, both the school and the county feel that potential, there's great potential for possible funding to be coming down the road to offset the cost of SROs. If I had to guess, I believe the, the grants are gonna have to be written by the schools because you're in a purchase service agreement, similar to your safety grants, they would come out of the Wisconsin Department of School Safety. So I can't guarantee that, I can't promise that, but sitting down with the administrators, what both sides had agreed upon is if it's, if it becomes available to the district, the district would write the grants, if it becomes available to the county, the county would write the grant. So potentially, either one, either my funding source through grants or your funding source through grants may potentially cover the expenses moving forward, but we, there is no guarantee, we don't know, we're just anticipating that that's probably what may occur, or at least a portion of it. And again, then all the schools will be operating under a standard operating procedure for SROs based on the national standard best practice. That manual clearly outlines what the responsibilities of the SRO and the sheriff's office are, and then what the responsibilities of the school districts are. Again, if we do move forward, I will sit down with the administrators and we will go through that, and if we need to tweak something, my goal is to sit down with all the administrators that are gonna participate in our program moving forward and work together to kind of get that end product. But it's all based on best, best practice, so I don't anticipate much of that happen to change. And this is the numbers, this is how it would impact your district. We did it based on school year. So for nine months, the 2019 to 2020, your share would be approximately $64,000. We will not exceed that, it could come in a little less again. I have the manager's salary and the benefits based on a union contract, but I'm telling you today, I won't come to your district and ask for more than that. 2021, it's $62,000, and 2122 is $60,000. And I know it looks like it should be in refers, but again, it's contract negotiated wages, it is, that is, because they're restructuring the deputy's salary, that's, that is the So obviously I'm here presenting, I'm presenting, as I said, to all the school boards in March. And then I will be presenting in April, which schools are interested in moving forward and I want to enter into the agreement, the formal agreement. And at that point, if your district is one of those schools, then we would provide the districts with the actual purchase service agreement or contract. Again, if I make it through our county board process, then we would begin our implementation plan, which is already in place, we just, we just need to, you know, approvals, and that would allow you to have a SRO in your school fall of 2019. Just in closing, just some key points I think you could take away. Again, it's a county-wide collaboration, collaborative approach. All the people that are at the table, that are at these safety meetings throughout our county, from all the different agencies, agree, you know, we need to type, to be more proactive and try something different. So that's why I'm here today in front of all of you. They do increase, I think SROs increase the feeling of safety among the students, teachers and administrators. And then there are statistics that show that, that they do result in higher academic achievement in schools that have SROs. Again, picture is aggressive behavior, I think it empowers the staff to maintain order and address behavioral issues in a timely fashion. And then it diminishes that classroom time spent on discipline and behavioral disruptions. It improves overall school safety and reduces, I think, school-based crimes. Probably the biggest thing it reduces is theft from what's been reported to me. And then just bullying and things of that nature. And then it does increase the likelihood that these relationships are built, so when something is going on or a potential gonna occur or has occurred in your school community, that these young people are willing to reach out to that school resource officer, and then overall, that helps our community as a whole. And then again, from a law enforcement perspective, I, I do feel that we need to spend more time building those relationships with the young people and our parents and our community, just so they understand, you know, we're here to help just as much as enforce. Probably, you know, I think if you could talk to the average law enforcement officer in Dor County, they would tell you, they signed up for prevention more so than enforcement. And we're blessed, you know, to live and work, I think, in Dor County, but. And then just the other thing, like I said, it, in my mind, school safety impacts everybody in our community, as lovely as it is, is no different than any other, you know, both nationally and within our own state, it's becoming a top priority. Our own state in, in 2018, I guess, as you're all aware, formed the Office of School Safety to start really addressing the serious issues. And then statistically, the actual violence, you know, they can happen in any size community, large schools, small schools, schools. You know, in my mind, it really comes down to asking ourselves as the adults in the community responsible, whatever our role is in the community, you know, are we as prepared? Are we investing in and are we being as proactive as possible in this area? And that, and, and I do believe it's a, it's a shared responsibility as we started. We all have our role in this community, but are we doing what we can and what we should be doing? And then obviously, my role as the sheriff, I need to provide people with what I believe is the correct direction and how I need to deploy my personnel throughout the county to make sure that we are doing everything that we can to provide the safest environment possible. You know, at, at the end of the day, our greatest asset in the community is our kids. You know, they're gonna be the next sheriff deputies, they're gonna be the next hospital administrators, the next district attorneys, the next school people, the next school board members, hopefully. So for me, it's important, I believe strongly, again, with my law enforcement background, I'm a school board resident myself, and I have young children attending a public school, it's important that we make some sort of action. And if we try this program, I'll be the first one to come and tell you if it's not working. All I ask is that you trust me and you give me the opportunity to try to see if this can make a difference in our community.
Thank you. Questions? Can I, can this be to you or questions for the sheriff?
I have a, I have a question.
Sure.
And it may be a dumb one, and I'm sorry. First of all, I'm very much in support of this, I think it's great. I'm just curious on, you know, your budget is from tax dollars, the school budget is from tax dollars, so, but all tax dollars. So I'm trying to reconcile, a good clarification in my own head to say why this is the right approach. Because at the end of the day, what we represent, your group and our group, we're all going to our taxpayers and saying, we feel this is high priority, right? Also, you know what I'm saying, is it versus all out of your budget or all out of our budget, and I guess, I suppose I probably know why we're taking existing budgets and reprioritizing that, is that kind of the answer, I guess?
Basically, yes, and I agree wholeheartedly, David. I mean, at the end of the day, we as a community, if we support this at the different schools, we as taxpayers are going to pay it, either through your school tax or, you know. But the reason we went with this approach is because that is basically what the standard is, that is what my county felt comfortable with. And as people have to report to a board, I have to report to a board as well. I, I think it's fair, I think it's a good way to approach it, but in the end, it's a community that's gonna either support this project or not. Hope you answered.
Yeah, 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 I'm not sure if that's a good answer.
Thank you.
So these are current officers that are being trained now that you have employed with county or new people?
Correct, I selected current officers because the basic requirement, they have to have a minimum of three years' experience. So depending on the number of schools that come aboard to the program and the county approves it, then I will have to hire three new officers to replace.
To fill the other, but that's what I thought, I thought, geez, it could be pretty short, you know?
Like I said, there's times where we only have three on the road and the county can't afford to do it. It's something I feel strongly about, so I'm trying to be as creative and upfront about it as I can and try to make it happen with minimal resources.
Not a question, but a comment. I really appreciate your presentation. I, I think you did a great job of covering what an SRO does in the school. Then I gazed at, on my experience in Green Bay, where I was the school administrator, who was the lead for the SRO program in the Green Bay schools, and I saw the results. And you're right, it's hard to quantify, but you can see it in the relationships that the kids develop with the SROs, and that was evident in the Idaho video that you showed. The kids will go to SROs and tell them a whole lot of stuff that they aren't gonna tell their parents or they aren't gonna tell school people, they just develop that very positive relationship and it helps their behaviors to thrive and to avoid some of the negative behaviors that could result otherwise. It develops that resiliency in kids. I think the real key is the officers who are involved and the training that they have. There have to be officers who want to do this and who can relate to kids. And I think you're taking the right approach by not basing it just on seniority, because I think that can be problematic. So I, I support this 100%, I think it's a fantastic program.
When Tammy first talked to us, she said that's about this, she floated out maybe piloting at one school and all of a sudden, yes, as long as it's our school, it's a good pilot, you know? Yeah, you can do that, but it's gotta be, um, sitting in on the interviews, all the candidates were there because they wanted to, they gave power plants, not as long, but they're. But they were, they were all, you could feel it, that each one had a desire for the job or the position, and, yeah, it was, their hearts were right, it's body, you could just feel it in the room, so, yeah.
You're saying I should throw in it for something else?
Well, keep theirs the same length.
Get that their bodies working.
Tammy, I have a comment and, and one question. My comment is, is echoing what you're hearing tonight, I, that, that was a beautiful presentation and it gets, it speaks really to your passion, but also to, to our need as a community. I'm, I, my question is around, my, another comment was around, we can't underestimate the power of dismantling myths and stereotypes toward law enforcement and the mileage that we will get, our students will get, of establishing a relationship with an SRO. You said, Sue, they, they, they'll tell them anything, but more importantly, when they're out in the community and they're at home and they're afraid or there's issues going on, that sense of trust, I, I, I know we can't quantify it, but I think that that's huge. Uh, my question is, will there be opportunity for, should all the other districts get on board about this, for the SROs to get together regularly to kind of not only support one another in their venture and, and. another in their venture and the work that they're doing in the schools, but maybe also talk about the commonality around what are the issues that are out there? Because our children are not just facing the trauma and the issues of mental health, but they're also facing, you know, the drug epidemic. And I'm thinking about common themes and maybe some collaborative work between the SROs about rotating presentations or sponsoring some kind of event.
Well, and our kids interact.
Our kids interact with each other more than ever now.
They do. Yes, and I want to keep it short. So the idea is it's a best.
So why don't I just go on and on?
My vision when I approached this superintendence was just that, an SRO unit for Door County, which also includes the SRO for the Sturgeon Bay School District. They're going to bring great value if they work together as a team throughout the company.
And I think I'll probably attend meetings with SROs from other places in the state.
Yes.
Get juvenile officers get together.
Whenever we can afford to do that, we get them there, yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
If not, we would take a motion, or a con, whatever you're going to do there. And I guess word it basically the way that item is worded, that we approve the SRO for Door County and then the rest of the language.
But the final approval will be at a future board meeting, wouldn't be tonight, it's just pending moving forward to make the arrangements.
Right, with final approval pending. So if you just word it that way, that sentences will cover.
You can word what I don't.
Sure. Could I just speak to that comment, I guess?
Yeah.
In talking through the other districts, I do think it's going to be approached as, are you going to approve it so that when I go to the county board in April, they know that that school is committed to.
For three years, correct, yeah.
Do you have a motion?
Carl.
I have one written, I hope it says, motion by with a second by to accept recommendation of Door County Sheriff Tammy Steiner to continue to work with the county for school resource officer pending the final approval of the board at a later date.
I would so move.
Second. Further questions or discussion?
Yes, sure. What's exactly she needs?
Is that what she would need for the county board? Would that give insurance for the county?
For a three-year contract would be important for the county.
Somebody want to make that amendment? An amendment to make it a three-year contract?
I'll add that to my motion if the second approval.
So it's a three-year commitment.
I'm going to read it back.
Okay, to accept recommendation of Door County Sheriff Tammy Steiner to continue to work with the county in a three-year contract, three-year commitment for school resource officer pending final approval of the board at a later date.
So what would be your normal process? So if I present in April to the county and I say, yes, Sevastopol's interested?
Yeah, we'd have the random understanding, and as long as that's following everything we saw tonight, then it would be approved.
Then I think that would suffice.
Because you gave us numbers, but then you got to go to your board to make sure those numbers would be exactly as presented, correct?
The numbers are.
The salaries, right, the cap, right, exactly.
They are accurate right now.
Go ahead.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. I would ask to item 300 donations out of the consent agenda and take that up separately. Are there any other items anyone who wish they have removed from the consent agenda?
Just a question on D1. It says for student activities and programs, is there any more specificity to that?
A thousand dollars for scholarship and four thousand dollars for any student program.
Has a decision been made?
No.
Okay.
Did you want to remove that for the discussion?
No, that's fine.
All right then, those items with the exception of 3D are approved by consent. Regarding the John Happy family, $300 for athletics. We, not too long ago, received a donation from the Zahn family of $1,000 toward the athletic program, I believe. And I was wondering, when we get those donations in memory of someone, if we should try to hold those in a separate account and designate them for something more substantial than just stuff that goes into the athletic budget. Specifically, what I'm thinking of, the gym is getting facelift this summer and we're going to be putting up banners in the gym. We want to redo the individual record holders that are out in the hallway. And money like this could go towards something like that in memory of those people.
I don't think we had any specific, you know, we sort of left it up to the athletic department what they wanted to do with it.
So my question is.
I think John would do the same. I would hope he'd spend it wisely, I don't think he would, you know.
So do you just want to leave it that way, spend it at the discretion of the athletic department, or have it designated toward something substantial?
What part?
I agree with Jay. I think family was, felt strong and all that they would provide that caveat. We've seen that before, I think somewhat, some have. So for me personally, I think I'm okay with it coming in. And we, you know, now if there's ways to rule in, a lot of our alumni that have done great things or past staff members, you know, new creatures and all those things that we know, certain people, Mr. Schultz, when we're getting our history sources.
Hopefully they'll improve the microphone so you can hear better.
Pardon me?
Hopefully the micro sub phone system, you know, it's just not good.
You won't recognize the house when you come out.
Really? Okay, good, I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, then can someone, would someone make a motion just to approve the John Happy family donation?
So.
You want to word that so Carl has the words?
I would move to approve the John Happy, John Happy family, $300 donation for athletics.
I'll second. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Administrator reports. Mr. Mayor, we'll start with you tonight.
Thank you, Lisa, I appreciate that. My report contains a lot of student staff recognitions and there's just been so many wonderful things happening during the month of March already. And I don't want to hight it all, but I can't go without, Congratulations in the House of Schools, it was a wonderful show, hopefully you had a chance to see that. In addition to that, we've had wonderful things happening with forensics, all of our students advancing to districts. DI, all six teams advanced to the state competition. And then our math team, our middle school math team had a wonderful showing with two Sevastopol teams taking first and second place out of the county competition, 16 teams participating, and we had 12 of the 20 top place winners. So that's outstanding. And then, of course, our winter sports athletes just acknowledged their students, Jeremy Jones, Nick West, Zoe Keane, Robbie Pullman, and Eddie Garcia, all got conference recognition.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Margaret?
I wanted to comment a little bit about school safety and it was perfect that this presentation just happened tonight because today I went to a reunification meeting at the Door County Sheriff's Office. And what it was, it's not really exciting in a very exciting way, but it is, the group that met were different leaders within the different schools, and they are leading the reunification process in each school. So we all got together today and started to customize what that's going to look like for Door County schools. So it was, it was really good conversation and a little bit overwhelming too with how much the schools are in charge and need to make sure that there's a coordinated effort that if any school emergency were to ever happen, that we have a system in place that's going to obviously get our students and our staff to a safe place, but also a safe place for parents to be informed, to be able to get their children. So my head's spinning a little bit from it, but it's a good spinning and it's, I'm happy to be a part of that program and that leadership to be able to bring it back to Sevastopol so everyone knows how to respond in those emergency situations. So it's really, it was a good day to have lots to think about.
Thank you. Mr. Hils?
Just a couple of quick highlights. First, had my first experience with the Dr. Seuss night that we hold here, it was wonderful as I, staff really worked hard. Thank you very much. Putting that all together and it was really just nice, we had about 250 people that came through and got to experience all those things. So kudos to everybody for putting that together. Also, you should have gotten a copy, they should have been passed around. I also had a link in my report about the Paella Press put on by the, coordinated by a couple of our teachers here. And kudos to them and our students for all of their efforts. It's a second edition and very nice with all the stories that they have there.
Thank you. Mr. Luki?
Well, I have a school newspaper, I read it there on the 20PA Y last night in the news. So if you missed it, you can find it on our website now. I think that's enough. Sure. Monday, the weighted grades committee met again. It's the third time we've met. The second time, we brought back research from different districts we contacted, we found out that districts are out there, are pretty split on whether to have weighted grades or not, with seven to six of the 13 districts that we've contacted. At this meeting, we focused on pros and cons, we felt rigor should be rewarded, and that every department in the high school should have the opportunity to identify some courses and have them be weighted if the instructors feel they are worth waiting. We had discussion about tiering it based on AP or not, we kind of, I'll talk about like a math class, an AP math class, some people might think that's more than a welding class, but then we've got a little kid from the welding, from the AP class, he goes out and tries to do the welding and see how that works for them because it's pretty challenging down there as well. With some of the results we got from the districts that do have weighted have five-point scales, six-point scales, seven-point scales, eight-point scales, some, there is some at a half a point better or a full point better. So where I come back and look at that, we did discuss, Mr. Bear and I, about grandfathering in if we do decide to go that route because it's not fair to incorporate like the senior to be partly through their senior year. So now we had here's weighted grades and can't destroy a system and you got to kind of grandfather it in and work it in. But we're working forward on that while another meeting in the future and we'll bring recommendation board soon. Strategic planning attached is a draft from our work with CISA 7. We met three days in February and the mission statement, the objectives and beliefs were pretty much developed during those three days, but the strategies, Aaron Elzuski, he gleaned those from the information he gathered in those three days, but the whole committee of 20 did have an opportunity to review those. And so he came, not me, and he said, well, what do you think? And I said, I didn't go whole group, since they worked on the first portions, should get the right sort of review of those as well. So we're going to get back together on Tuesday night from 6:00 to 8:00 and work on this. We'll review everything, but we're specifically going to focus in on the strategies portion. So those are two things we have planned.
Anything else? Nothing from you?
I think that's enough.
The core planning team met last Thursday. Did you update anybody on that?
Yeah, it was a great, it was a huge day. Every grade level, early childhood through fifth grade had the opportunity to meet with the architects and talk about room design. The architects had the floor plan and then they had like a, what'd you call it, 3D model? Yeah, it was pretty neat. And we want our first through fifth grade classrooms to be uniform because you don't know what their use is going to be in the future. And we want one standard set. And it was interesting because second grade would come in and look at what first grade did and they build on it. They wouldn't go back though and change what the previous group did, and third grade did the same, and fourth grade, and fifth grade. So it got better and better by the end. All those groups would come back in four to six weeks and get another shot at that. We also had all the K-12 office people meet in the afternoon, and that was quite a group because you've got a couple counselors, a couple principals, people services, and there's a lot of spaces within one large room, so there's a lot of squares and there's a lot of moving around. What else? Another group's met that day. It was every like half hour, new group came in, so it was a lot of.
Early childhood, the library.
Yeah, early childhood. Elementary library, multipurpose room, we just touched on a little bit, we didn't do any real design changes there yet. Elementary library.
It was impressive how the elementary teachers really looked at those spaces and made some suggestions that the architects accepted. Architects don't like someone to touch their work, but they were, they thought the teachers had good, good ideas for those changes.
The architects did tell me at lunch that our teachers are low maintenance, probably because of the current facility. Said that, you know, they could ask for a little more because they, yeah, because we're thankful for.
There you go, tell them it takes more.
Well, I mean, if we want to get the building right this time, we get it, so.
I know. He told them today that one of them had totally outdated furniture in her room, she had Lauren's chair. And I said, vintage is coming back.
That chair is not going with the vintage. I was going to throw up when I saw it the other day. No, no. What else about that? Well, this next Thursday then, ELL and Title will have their first meetings and agriculture, industrial arts will have their second meeting, and science will have their second set of meetings and special ed. So they're going to get a rotate through and they'll come back as many times as it takes to get this project right. The hallway.
The cabbies?
The early childhood.
Oh, oh, the hallway.
Working and pine cake had their wing or their suite as they call it. And the hallway for first through fifth grade to go out to recess was going down their hallway and out the door. And they put a hallway in, cutting them off from going down that suite so they go up earlier. So it was ingenious because now they're running through that hallway three, four, five times a day, it was great, and it just was a simple adjustment. And they also came up with the office spaces and practice areas for the music wing because on our, you know, back here on that 91 edition, the part that's just the narrow portion will get knocked down, so they'll lose all their current offices and practice spaces. So they put those on an angle going towards the 91 portion. So it's a lot of interesting, yeah, it's neat progress we're making.
And one thing I want to add is that everyone recognizes the dynamic collaboration by all the staff and the architectural team and Kyle's team, that's, that's really great. I mean, I think it's really kind of neat where they're growing this and within budget, you know, which is important, but it's kind of neat to see that go.
Yeah, Andre from Myron always gets excited when, he's the budget guy. And he'll say, no, you can't do that. Well, the teacher asked for a rounded wall and he said, no, but an angled one worked. And that was great, you know, and he said, a curved wall is really expensive, he got really excited, he goes, you just can't do that because it would have been at 12 different places in the school. So that was good stuff.
Yeah. Lunch committee, any updates? Communication committee, any updates?
Communication meets Monday.
Right, because of our meeting this month moving up, we had a maxing for our last board meeting, Thursday, Monday, the agenda is out. Lunch, I think there's some, I don't know, the art department and Casey, have been meeting at all or?
They've had, yeah, I'm looking at that one, it'll be done with tenure maintenance. But, and they had a couple meetings canceled because of the weather because of the sales lady, but yeah, we'll cover that on there.
I think the town annual meetings will occur before our next board meetings. I'm just going to pitch for everybody to get to your town meeting and take your three minutes and tell people about what is happening in the school. People are furious, what's going on? When are you going to break ground? When are you going to move in? Give them some good, you know, give them some good news, just stay in touch with them and keeps, keeps the school in their minds. So get to your town meetings, which are about the, I think they're about the third Tuesday in April.
Are they all the same evening?
They're all, they're generally all the same evening. I went to a, and I, I think it was a compensation meeting today, but I'm not really sure, with Mr. Luki and staff, and they just, they, it was a good conversation, they had to talk about makeup days for this year and days for next year, and it was, it was a spirited conversation, but one that had to have, so I appreciate all of the staff being there and collaborating with Mr. Luki to get to some resolution. I know you've got to post some things to the rest of your staff, but that'll be coming through the board soon. I think that's it. Oh, this was interesting, I went to a presentation at Sturgeon Bay. It was two school board members from Sturgeon Bay, Pamela Parks from Southern Door, and Stephen Seifer from Gibraltar, and it was for Leadership of Door County about the work of school boards. And I think the rest of us were just like listening to Stephen Seifer because he did almost all the talking, but it was okay because he's got a whole, he's got a different perspective than, than everyone else. So, anything for the budget report?
You want to talk about the transferring of funds?
Next, we've done 20 years. We will be closing on our, I don't know, I'm going to call it the, the, closing on the real bonds, which will be used to pay off the bond anticipation loans. The closing day, we have to make payment for the bond anticipation, though it's on April 10th. So basically for about 20 days, we're going to have an additional $20 million, almost $20 million in our investment accounts. And John from ADM said, well, please look at it, probably about $25,000 interest we'll make on that. With that payment that we create on April, $500,000 will come from bond or from levy proceeds, which is what we had, uh, put into the budget or into the levy. So 500 will come from us. The rest of the other 19 million will come from the bond proceeds that we're getting, um, from the bonds that are actually being sold. And I was really confused about why we did what we did and then went back and read some notes with Todd and John. Basically it gave us an opportunity to lock in our rates, which 3.41.
3.41 or something. It was close to 5, remember?
Right, right. Yes, right.
It was the lowest mark in the last month.
Math team discussions, sorry.
It was the last, the lowest in the last month.
I was the second person that used that word on me today and I just don't get it.
So it was, it was an opportunity to lock in our rate and, and gave us more opportunity to do that. Instead of just buying the bonds right away and then having to lock in the rate where you can't really negotiate, you know, at that point in time. So I got my mind straight and just figured, okay, now I understand where we're going with this. Cause I'm like, we got to pay these words that are coming from. And I was, I was fretting a bit. I mean, I was, I was confused, so. But, um, other than that, the budgets are coming in from all of the teachers and that going to the principals and going to Mr. Lukey. So they'll be into Jean and I shortly and we'll start importing into the system and hopefully have them ready shortly.
And April 5th, is that?
What's that?
Is it April 5th?
Yeah, April 5th, we go back to, as a consortium, it was unanimous decision to go out, uh, out to bid for the art health insurance. So, uh, yeah, our M3 is doing that. They're getting bids and that in. Then we come back on April 5th to make a decision who our health provider will be, um, going forward. Whether it will be Network Health or whomever. That will be out, put in a presentation that Kyle and I talked about it. And it just, for what they're proposing, it, I don't see, it's just not beneficial for us. And I can kind of see a lot of the other districts are kind of feeling the same way.
Well, it was an evil vote to go out and bid after they gave the presentation, so. Right, one that the district was absent, so we all felt the same, so, you know. And I don't like changing health carriers all the time, but we've dealt with our people too. There are dollars and I didn't like the presentation, but maybe it's the best one we're going to see. I don't know.
And also with that, um, M3 has also sent out, they sent it out Monday and I sent it out to them, to all staff and all this yaw meeting. Got the, the email, there was a survey and they want to know what the people in the district, what their preferences are, what their most important is. Whether it's, you know, having your choice of health care or provider or basically hospitals or is it cheaper prices or whatever? So that, I'm hoping all of my staff, or all of the staff did the, um, the. Yeah, and maybe I'll send out another email and I'll just remind them that they, that was the survey.
Anything for facilities?
Well, facilities, we have the Friday off because of the water break that's down at the bottom of steps as you go towards the cafeteria. They found out when they cut into the floor that the pipes in 1965 were only laid in a few inches. So the saw hit the cold water pipe, which I believe was in the hot water pipe. So that had to be fixed. And then when they fixed the first leak in the hot water, then leaked in the second spot. So they got it solved. It's cemented now. Rock has a gentleman coming to talk about tile. We did contact our property insurance. We have a $25,000 deductible per incident and this probably won't reach that level of expense. We've only received the cement bill at this time. We've not received the plumbing bill and obviously the tile we haven't, but at least we keep it on record for the insurance company. Rock did a really good job because when the independent assessor came, Rocket taking pictures before they put it poured the cement in to show what all had been done. But the one had probably been weakened for quite some time by the way the cement was worn underneath. It's just, it's 1965, so that's what happens.
How does this impact your hours and minutes?
We're going to add what had a day on, but I was kind of waiting to see what our snow did here too before I said, okay, let's do this. Because last year it snowed April as well. But yeah, it caused us another day.
In addition to what we did last?
We were even.
Yeah.
And now we're one behind, right?
Okay.
Right, yeah. And we also have boiler go out in the 91 section. It was the larger of the two boilers. And well, the water got down at 50 degrees. It's supposed to be 180 and the gym got down to 40 something degrees that one day. So that got fixed. So you'll see a bill for $6,000 to fix that, so, yeah.
Okay. Next on our agenda is meet and confer. Several years ago, we started to talk about meet and confer and I sent you those two draft documents and two put in your packet that we looked at at that time. And then meet and confer got shelved and we had some just general listening sessions. Meet and confer was brought back as a request by staff. So, um, we need to talk about, what do we want to do about that? Do we want to? Do we not want to? What's our purpose? And so that was the purpose of my memo to you. Things that I thought we need to establish, needed to establish outside of the things that were in those draft documents. Because, well, the one was really cumbersome and, um, legal schmiggle. And there are some legalities needed with it, but, um, I, I put what were our intent? And I thought we need communication and staff and student wellbeing was our intent. We would need to determine membership. Board members, what kind of staff representation? Do the administrators have a role or representation? What I suggested under staff representation was one representative from each group. Food service, transportation, maintenance, aides, teaching staff, and then elementary, middle, high school. Board members, two or not more than three. And maybe representation rotates depending on the topics that come up. Anybody want to talk about those? What about?
Well, I guess, um, I like the idea of meet and confer. I do like, um, I personally like the simplified guides instead of the little mumble jumble personally, but some of that's needed. And I do think, uh, so maybe we have some work on how we, or we could accept the detail wrong. But they should be open to anybody and I think the agenda will change based on the issue that might drive the participation. So prior to having the meeting, we go through and establish all this. But I think the topic may drive a different, the way I'm seeing this, it may drive a different participation. But I think the first thing that I want, and we've talked about it before, I think before we agree to a meet and confer, it should be well vetted. Why, um, if it fits in an additional committee. Like if there's salary questions, there's a compensation committee. If anyone go to the compensation committee if you have questions. So I think that's the one thing we talked about and we're just forming this, but you know, there's existing committees today. So if somebody wants to bring it, one good is a clarification. Can general staff people who don't normally support a committee come in ad hoc type of thing? Or is that not authorized?
Mr. Lukey gave his staff a couple of weeks ago a form that was used. Got it with Senator and he liked, was a staff concern form. And they could submit that to him with their concern, whatever it is, or their request. Um, and then from there, what I thought is they're going to look at that and, um, some concerns are going to be handled at the desk. Maybe it has to go back to the principal. Maybe it goes, maybe it's just something he handles at his desk. I think he gave the paper cutter as a.
Well, that was the example from the summer, the student act attendant, right? Exactly. And it turns out ours is probably too, as the teachers work.
Did you get a paperwork on the?
I heard, and I'm not, but I heard.
I'm disappointed there should be one of them.
So if that, if that topic, whatever that concern is or topic can't be handled by principal superintendent or an already established committee like compensation benefits. The superintendent would bring it forward to the board for consideration on an agenda for meet and confer. Is that your?
Well, my understanding is last month, meet and confer was approved with guidelines to be established. So now what are the guidelines? My question. How many board members are participating? I would recommend less than a quorum. Where are you seeking from staff? And what's the frequency of the meetings? And then are the topics just handbook topics or are they more than that? Mrs. Dantoin and Mr. Hilbert presented last month their ideas. And so you got that. So I think you got to frame who with us. Like our other committees, we appoint three people to the securities, property and buildings. And you have two on negotiations and two on communications. So now we have meet and confer. Who's representing the board on that? And what role do you want the administrative team on that?
So let's try to chunk this off one bite at a time. Membership from the board standpoint, two or three?
I don't think two should be an item.
Do administrators have a place at the table? Are they there to provide input?
So, and this is where I clash with.
And when I say administrators, school superintendent?
So my question is, are we able to put guidelines in place that would? Let's say a meet and confer topic is a high school related issue. The high school principal might or should probably be there. The elementary principal might not need to be there. So my point is when we set this today, does it have to be concrete? I'm asking for, an issue may come up that it's really all people services and the other two get it, are not part of it. So that's, if, if there's a way to construct that, to me, that is most effective. Because one is we have lots of committees and the emphasis of this dialogue is, I believe this board is really trying to show that if there's issues not being addressed, we want to hear about them. That's why we want to meet and confer. But we also trust that the chain of command should be working, the committee should be working and that process is working. So we want to cultivate, continue to cultivate all of that because it all is important. So that's why I was looking for the flexibility. If it's really not practical to be that flexible, then pork and concrete, we'll live with it. But I'm just, then maybe we need to chew on it, so. And I think two schools, you know, if it's, and even school board members, if it's something on, that Sue might be really more knowledgeable in, maybe we'd ask her to participate.
I could see that, I could see that rotating.
Depending on the.
Different areas of expertise and interests. So I wouldn't name school board members in this. I would say two school board members and we decide at the time of meet and confer, who's going to represent that time.
So I think the administrative team should be represented. I mean, if you say that, maybe there's flexibility on it.
It could be represented, representation as needed, you know, based on.
Is that typical style or is that not really the right answer?
Yeah, yeah, just, it'll be interesting because if we get to a quarterly meeting or a monthly meeting and then we have a topic that's elementary, one that's high school, one that's people services, that all three are there anyways, you know?
Correct, yeah.
You know, so, yeah, whatever, you know?
And then the, the school groups, I think you, I don't know if it's one from each group or if it's more than one from each group, but I think you open it to each group. And if the bus drivers are not interested in the topics of the day, well, then they just don't come. But I think we have to open it to. Offer the opportunity to.
Cause I was, all of us is to give a voice, right? So if people want to come, then that's.
So outside of those group representatives, could others just attend?
I think.
Just like in that community meeting.
It's a meeting and you can attend, but the people at the.
They'll be represented by a set group, but they could be in the audience.
So I, is one from each of those groups enough? I mean, we don't want to have five from each employment group. That could get too many. I would say we don't want more than two from each group.
Well, I think, well, what I maybe heard in offers, it should be offered to each group with some, you know, the real leading topic. Maybe you do need three for this meeting. And I could do Lucy Goosey.
Maybe at the first meeting, you have meet and confer, okay, problems identified and it was represented from each of the three staffing areas for teachers, aides, maintenance, everything else. That's seven people. And I say, okay, now obviously it's a bigger problem. And the committee says, all right, take a charge on this and we're going to have to have more than one middle school teacher work on this, right?
Yes, thank you.
Right, I think that, otherwise you end up with seven, 10, 15, we're going to have.
Well, and I think that comment exactly, you know, I think, you know, our staff is working hard and busy. So just, you know, we want to have the opportunity, but another mandatory meeting, I think, they may be questioned at times, so.
So how frequently would we want meetings to occur? As, do we say quarter or do we say as, um, as determined necessary by the school board superintendent or?
That's a great question. Mrs. Dantoin, that was one of her questions, to decide how often meet. So their side's wondering the same thing. Maybe the word side isn't correct to use, but we're all wondering how often you meet, you know? Do you start quarterly and see if that's frequent enough?
I might say quarterly just to get the ball rolling. And then they, cause I was like, maybe the issue spins off, hey, we're going to have some side meetings and we, it's, it's timely for the start of next year. Let's meet every week, maybe, I mean, for this one scenario. And we solve it. But then the other one might say, we got, there's no issues. Let's not hold a meeting just to hold a meeting. So I think, you can see me, I like flexibility with rigidity underneath it. Go with a quarterly meeting and if there's nothing there, we'll have to meet. If there's always topics, well then maybe.
I agree not to meet it just to meet, but sometimes it's nice just to touch base too. I don't think once in quarters to, to, to three, but if it has every three months, that's not terrible.
If it be in March, this way you can get one in, get this, you know, soon, this end of the school year and then progress.
Is that relative to the schedule of these meetings during the summer then? Or just is this a top school time type of thing or is it year long? Does that matter? Have we changed the period? I was thinking year long, that's not my rating marks, but maybe that's not need to be decided today.
How many ones this spring and I guess we'll probably have it at all.
How then will the agenda be established? As I said, Mr. Lukey gave a staff concern form, those who come back. If someone, I guess, could write a letter requesting an item, you want only the staff concern form?
Well, I think the staff conference report is one thing, but then you also have a representative from each area. They should be talking to their department, their folks and say, hey, what do you got? Anything concerning or anything, you know, I brought up when I go meet on next week, Tuesday or whatever it is and they could bring it there.
Don't you anticipate this form to be, um, almost on the bottom of it being like a decision tree? I, I, I see the, the issue being brought forward and then it could be resolved through the communication committee. And you make, and that, under the actions, on the bottom of the form, maybe action taken referred to communication committee. Or this needs to go to meet and confer.
They would just say, or admin team will take care of that one or wherever it goes, it goes, yeah. As long as it's, right. But I think it's got to go back out to the staff so they know the issue is either in process. And at that point, the name comes off of it because you take ownership by signing it. So you're taking, and you've got to give up. And you've got to give us a potential solution or an idea and then go forward, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Have you had any forms submitted yet?
No.
So when we establish a date for meet and confer, you would send some kind of a memo to the staff stating we're going to have meet and confer on April 23rd? And we're taking requests for agenda items until?
Yeah, and we've looked for one representative from food service, transportation, maintenance, aides, teachers, elementary, middle school, high school, yeah.
And do we need to? And do we have...
Who's the representative?
From, from, from a school council, like that.
Who's the chosen one from those each?
And they might rotate, depending on the agenda as well.
The elementary staff will get together and they'll say, yeah, you, someone probably volunteer.
Okay, because it's not just, yeah, anyone can do it. There's many people, it's not just, it's anyone can do it.
I think within those seven areas, we're pretty covered, you know?
I think there are some guidelines in this particular jacket that talk about these are open session meetings and they need to be posted. I think that all needs to be incorporated.
There are some, there are some legal types of items in this draft.
Right, I think we need more than just the things on this sheet.
Right.
I think we need some of these.
Yeah, and I think I said that in my memo. This is a good start, these are the legal things we need, but these are some other decisions we had to make that weren't in the draft, so...
Then we'll post like the core planning team meetings, or post the communications committee on Mondays posted, so, yeah.
And they would not be limited to the SEA?
No, because we want all the groups, right, right.
Is there, do you guys have any meetings at school that don't have to be posted? It's a silly question, I'm asking.
If it involves board members, then we post if it's...
What if it's less than, if it's two?
If it's just a committee like ad team meets, we don't post that, or whatever. Any staff meeting, we don't post those. But if it's one where the board is governing it, then it's with the board committee, then we post it. Like with technology, you're the representative on there, but that's not a board committee, that's the schools, that's the districts, you're in, so that's different.
Good example, I'm just wondering if...
The communications, that board...
Is meeting confer intended to be that formal? Or was it the informal method of giving a voice to the staff?
We're authorizing it.
You authorize it when you voted on it last month, and now it's a board committee, so then you need to establish how many members are gonna be...
Don't we approve all the committees, like the computer, the technology committees?
No, and we throw, no, we'll throw together a committee about something, because we're getting something done, you know?
Right, that's, I like that idea. It's more flexible, we got an issue, let's meet, let's talk about it. If there's big issues, let's meet and fix it. That's, because all of a sudden, what I'm, what I'm hearing is coming slow, administrative burden over head, keep posting more meetings. So, and I guess if we've already made that decision, I, I vote it.
But that's okay, because it's, I think meeting confer needs that, because it has the board interaction in that role.
Okay, if that, that's how we work, okay, that's...
Because some of the things that come out of meeting confer, then could you set that to more?
Then I would do with Sue, but all the additional detail is needed, there's... Throw in rocks, rules of order, because you guys love that, I love that rock and roll thing.
So, Lisa, we also need to be improved that first meeting to set the guidelines for meeting confer and get off the word draft. It'd be nice to have something, we're gonna...
What's this, let's use that first meeting to...
Like, my thought was, we, we have to, we have to decide on something here to, to talk about. So in that first meeting confer, we would talk about, oh, you think this should go with the staff, and have an exchange, you know, maybe they have a strong disagreement with something we're deciding on.
And as a group, you could work on these, and we could talk on it.
I don't think we need, I think this is the one we need to go with, the more simple like. I think those are the, I think those are the legal...
That was our intent, when we worked on this several years ago, was to go with this, not the other committee.
Very good.
So does that give us, give you information that you need?
Give you more decisions, please. The, only thing I don't know is the first meeting, which two board members volunteer to serve on that first time? What were two volunteers?
I think it depends on what you set for a date.
Yeah, we have other meetings too. Does it happen the same two every time that we just...
No, we said it could rotate, that's what we just discussed, right?
I will support the meetings if I'm available, I'm traveling, I can't...
Okay.
I will, I can, I will...
Do you have a date in mind? Or just can we post it if I, I mean...
If you wanna select a date right now, we can.
Or you want to just get back to us, I'm okay with that.
No, no, I don't care if I get a date right now, I'm good with doing that now.
You have to do it April, because the spring break's coming up.
Come to school first, get out, let's get out. Uh, you have any, April you said?
Oh, I don't know, I, maybe the last week in March.
Come back to school usual first, but last week March is spring break.
Oh, last week is spring break.
This would be one of those meetings at like about 3:30, you're...
We got Easter in there.
That'd be best. Easter is the 21st. The board meeting is on the 18th of April. So do you want before the next board meeting, or after? So you talk to them quarterly?
If we could do it before the next meeting, we can finalize this and give final approval to it.
Okay. Does the 9th of April, a Tuesday, work for anyone?
Or sweet. Somebody else is eager to take a spot, they can have it, but not all set in.
3:30?
Sure, sure, 3:30.
All right, we'll schedule the act, and Mr. Rupi will get something out to the staff, and then we'll rotate it, you said, right? We're gonna rotate membership, right, depending on, for topics. And I don't know if this has any other topics other than this.
Well, then guidelines would be first of all.
You can involve heavy lifting, then the rest of us.
So if anybody has comments on guidelines, I mean, send them to, for the board. We'll, we'll reference that structure to that.
Do we need to give preliminary approval to that, to the structure?
No, we're good.
No. Tenure maintenance plan?
We review our tenure maintenance plan on annual basis. The first sheet we have is the goals for the summer of 2019. Out behind the student parking lot, staff parking lot back, we have a red shed. The FFA egg uses half of for their storage. We put one pickup truck in a portion of it, and it has a lean to. That building is gonna be in the way of the new addition, so it has to be moved before spring of 2020. So this summer will be the appropriate time to move it. So far, Rock has one bid for just moving it. He's also now in the process of getting bids for a brand new shed, because the most expensive part about the shed is the concrete, and it's 40 years old already, it has some issues with the roof line. He got a bid from, well, he doesn't have a bid from, but he reached out to Forestville Builders. They haven't gotten back to him, and... We got this blank on Portside. And the gentleman was on vacation, but he's working on it. Rock sent an email saying, this is what I'm looking for. So then, that'll come to securities, buildings and property committee with those comparisons, because the shed needs to be moved before construction starts.
Carr, E C A R E line is a lot of farm, like sheds.
I don't know, but I know Randy, Randy Grant.
Quick building.
Please send a lot of that, I'll get you discussing them.
Well, Rock's working on bids on that currently, but that'll go, go there, because we have to move that, the inner part that has to move is the propane tank out back. And we rent that from Lakes right now, so in the process of moving it, it may be the time to actually purchase our own, because then we're not a Lakes only customer. They've been good to us, but you don't always wanna have one person your only source. So if you purchase a tank, and the difficult part will be when they move that, they gotta rehook it back up, because we need to have propane during the 2021 school year to run that going, so...
We did that at a time, we purchased all of our tanks, and now we can get whoever gives us the best bid for propane before we can go. We don't have to go with whatever tank it was, we bought the tanks.
Right, right. And we'll find out more with the engineers next week at the core planning, because they find they're sending engineers to the first meeting. We've had nothing but design so far, but engineers are coming the next one of those meetings, so it'll help us out. And the other two projects, the existing building that's renovating, Lakes 65 Gym, Rock's working on getting bids for lighting, paint, design. Some of you sir, talked about it, met about it, if you could share more about that.
I, I kind of don't wanna tell everybody what's happening, because I want it to be wow when you walk in. It's gonna be wow when you walk in.
You'll be able to hear. Because I don't see, I don't see like acoustics panels absorbing this sound.
That's gonna be able to, believe, hear what we have now.
Could you understand what people are saying?
Yeah, or understand, yeah, I can't, I mean, when the, when the girls gave their talk at the end, I couldn't under, hear a word what they said.
There's nothing, there's nothing in there now. We had those quilted things that were hanging in the ceiling, do you remember those?
Yeah, yeah, but is that gonna make it, does it make it do the sound?
Those had to come down, you have to have acoustics.
I think it's just a system that it's been...
You have to have acoustics up and on the sides, because the sound bounces all over. So, so I don't know who put on the old things in the ceiling.
Those are very popular for a long, long time.
I didn't see that even the P A system, like your...
The P A system just is not good.
But now, to Jay's point, because I haven't heard an answer to Jay's question, we're bringing guys in to help the team, so the school group is prioritizing priorities, but they're gonna bring a gym person in, right?
He's working as professionals, the doing it.
So I believe acoustics will be part of that, so...
And acoustic panels, so...
I mean, when I go to southern door, I can hear whatever they say.
I think, I believe, I hope, hope it's the wrong answer. I believe Jay, the answer is yes, acoustics will get better. And guys like you and me will hear what they're saying.
Perfect.
Well, I mean, my hearing is pretty good, but I just can't hear that from Jay.
I guess I haven't noticed that, but maybe it's something...
You could hear everything?
Wouldn't they have like senior name, or parents name, or...
Well, I always attribute that to the kids not talking loud.
Yeah, but it's not just that.
Well, all right, maybe that's...
If Jay says he can hear it at southern door, then it must be our system, because their kids...
Well, they have a huge, you know, they have a field house, you know? I, I just don't, I mean, the buzzer is a lot louder in our gym than anywhere else. I can hear that. I can't hear...
Well, that's, I guess that's something we'll have to ask Rock about, and...
We'll make sure the P A system's included in the plan.
Make sure the P A's, so, so yeah, everything from a new floor to paint to banners to...
Not necessarily new floor, but...
Not a new floor, resurface.
Resurface, well, there's a big difference.
Refinish floor.
New floor.
Not a new floor, resurfacing, we have, there's a big difference between those two.
Finish floor with new lines and, and lettering and things like that.
And then Casey and the art teachers and a couple of the aides that are working on the renovation plan for the cafeteria, Rock's working on getting a lighting bid for them, and electrical for that. I saw a map of it, and it looks pretty nice, so they're, they're working on it. So we're trying to improve existing areas that we're keeping. And Rock's crew's gonna do less maintenance on the 24 and 46 section going forward. And it's just, we're 30 months away from not having this place, and so we'll count down the months, and so, you know, get us to where we need to get to. So, but those are the three for summer. Then you have the rest of the tenure maintenance plan, and that was developed when you set a Fund 46. And I believe you put a thousand dollars in Fund 46. Fund 46, you transfer from fund balance if you want to. You can't touch the money for the first five years in which you establish it. The only way you can establish it is by having a tenure maintenance plan. So I believe that at that time, team did a good job of planning the future, but now November 6 changed our whole future to, okay, we don't need some of these items, so it needs to be reviewed again and changed off, because you'll see like H back for the 1965 section. Well, that's gonna be changed when it gets sourced from here to, over the new addition. So things, so some things on the list are done, or will be done with the project, and so we gotta redo that, but, yeah, but it's, it's exciting, so... And like moving the red shed out back wasn't on there, because there was no plan to do that, there was no need to do that, but now there is. So it's, and, and that's the nice thing about the tenure plan is, you can change it anytime you want, because if you have a boiler go out, you can switch around, right? Put that at the top of the list, because obviously that's what you're gonna do next. But you can't touch that money until June of 2020.
Five years.
Five years from when the first dollar goes in, exactly, so...
Questions on the plan?
None? So these are just, so at this point, we're just, we're not following this, we're just showing what we had.
You have to have a plan in place.
You had to have a plan in place, and so when, these were hopes and dreams for the future, but then when you see someone, you go, well, that's no longer necessary, because that part of the building's...
We will list three tools to match...
When the security property and building committee gets together, but right now, I mean, every Thursday...
Well, would you, I would add, the plan is being followed, but plans change. And if you look at something, they're like, hey, we're not gonna spend on something, that money we're tearing down. So just to be, I mean, the plan was, was the construct of what was being followed in that group. And now the group needs to update, and I think that's what he said, they're gonna go and proceed to update it, the group update.
Like probably the best part of the plan was the roofing.
Yeah, that's, that's, it's gonna be a lot less roofs to...
Yeah, there's 19 roofs on our current building, and so when you see roofs 5, 12 and 19, well, a couple more can exist, so...
Well, because the reason I, I asked for the map of the roof, so I could understand it, but I was thinking if, at the time that the new facility is being grouped, if there would be a cost savings to then have some of our other rooms done at that time, since they're already here and we could work that into our budget or, or some of our fund balance, you know, it just makes sense. You know, it's like, you got the guy here, well, while he's here, if there's a couple other rooms that need to be worked on, and they've got the materials, that's why, that was where I was going with that. I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Right, I know what you're saying, yeah.
You won't be one square at the sidewalk, if it is busted, sometimes you break out the whole section and fix it all at one time, so, so something to consider.
Security properties and buildings gotta come in, go over this again and again, but, yeah, right now, it's every Thursday with...
My, my one thought of that, on that is, and I, I don't know, I'm just thinking, this is a new roof they're putting on. These other roofs, Rock has had the same company working on all these years, and they know what they've done on each one of them, and they know where the problem areas are. And it might be some coordination between those people and who's supplying the new roof to understand the interest species of the rest of yours. But something to talk about with Rock. We will move on to then some second readings of policies. Approve motion on policy 0152.
Make a motion to approve policy 0152, officers?
Second.
I don't know how I didn't catch this the first time, but this board also elects an assistant clerk? And that's not listed in that, it's not listed...
Elects a new assistant clerk.
In policies, so we need to add that.
Okay.
So would someone like to amend the motion to add assistant clerk?
Amend my motion to add assistant clerk to policy...
Who seconded that? You accept that?
Yes, that's right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 1110.
Move to approve the second reading of 1110, assessment of district goals.
Second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, policy 2451.
Move to approve policy 2451, alternative education programs.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, policy 3124.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 3124, employment contract.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Lisa, before you, before you continue, when you make a motion, make sure you, you need to put in there a second, approve a second reading of the motion.
Will it add that to previous?
I already have one in there, but...
We'll just note when you say that, approve the second reading when you make your motion. 3430 and 4430, which are essentially the same, just for different work years.
I approve to approve policy 3430, 4430, second reading, leaves of absence.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 8531.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of policy eight-five-three-one, free and reduce price levels.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Policy zero-one-six-four-point-one.
Move to approve the second reading of policy zero-one-six-four-point-one, regular readings.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Five-three-one-zero-point-zero-one.
Move to approve, uh, second reading, policy five-three-one-zero-point-zero-one, emergency nursing services.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Zero-one-four-two-point-seven.
Move to approve second reading of policy zero-one-four-two-point-seven, orientation.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Two-two-six-zero-point-zero-two.
Move to approve policy two-two-six-zero-point-oh-two, English language professors, second reading of that.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Five-four-six-zero-point-zero-one.
Make motion to approve second reading of policy five-four-six-zero-point-zero-one, diploma deferred.
Second then.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then the deletion of those, um, pre-policies listed under item D.
Make motion to approve the second reading of the deletion of policies four-four-two-zero, health insurance benefit, six-three-five-zero.
Three-four-two-zero.
Three-four-two-zero, um, six-three-five-zero, prevailing wage coordinator and.
Second.
Got all three of them covered. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Um, we took care of item A, the school resource officer. Recognition protocol, um, it was a discussion at the Communication Committee on how we recognize staff. Recognize staff. There was a time we would have recognition on our agenda, but never have anything. Um, in former years, when staff would retire, they would have a dinner someplace and then people that had been with the district five, ten, fifteen years or whatever would be recognized at that time. Um, the most recent retirees didn't want a dinner. They had cake and ice cream in the multipurpose room. At, um, Communication Committee, it was kind of determined that the recognitions of staff for five, ten, fifteen years, et cetera. They really don't wanna come back to this school board meeting at seven o'clock at night for cake and ice cream. So, um, what we talked about was doing that at an event where they would all be. Maybe it's the new staff breakfast at the start of the year because everyone goes to that with us during the school service aids, everyone, um, and recognize them at that time for their years of service.
Or teacher appreciation week or all that?
The, the teacher appreciation week breakfast, but, an event where everyone would come. So, you can recognize all the staff for whatever, whatever years, whatever we decided. If it's five, ten, fifteen and over, that's what it is. On the second page, another idea was at the end of the school year, those people would be recognized in the pioneer times for their, um, service. We would put them on social media towards the end of the year. Maybe we'd spread them out one at a time. Um, we thought they should give it, this should always be personal, so we thought they should get some kind of a personal note from their supervisor or superintendent saying, hey, you've been with the district for ten years and I remember when we interviewed you and thanks for being here, whatever. Just make it personal to them. Um, we would recognize that at a school board meeting, not that they would necessarily need to come to be recognized, but just as a matter of the record here. We talked also about a staff stories page on the website. And then coaching staff, we talked about recognizing them at the same interview intervals where they've been coaching five years, ten years, fifteen years, if we're so lucky. And kind of the same recognition, the pioneer times, social media, a note from, from someone in the school, um, the mention at the school board meeting. So, um, the guidelines were kind of to make it fun and personal, go out of our way to find out what makes the staff member tick. Um, social praise should be communicated clearly with the staff member. Obviously, for the people having to do this, we don't want it to be cumbersome, but we should do it. So, your thoughts on that general process?
I think we've done a nice job organizing it. Here I go.
So, do you want to, um, adopt this as our protocol for recognizing staff? Staff, coworkers?
Yeah, the thing I'm gonna, saying this before, I think, um, I think I would like to expect that our admin team recognizes their team, it gives them attaboys or whatever, good jobs once in a while. And so what we're talking about now is making in, like the last one, what I missed is Mark right up, school board sanction, this is what we're gonna do versus setting a culture of we expect some feedback, both positive and mentoring type to be going. So, that's what I'm trying to do. Because I do think, you know, I'm trying to choose both, right?
And I guess we should, I guess we should ask what the superintendent and the administrative team think about it because some of this is on them, reaching out to that person.
Well, most of it, I mean, on the school board, we can give recognition to guys, you know.
But, like, I, I, I do think someone's here five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, yeah, that's, with the attaboys and that, that comes from, us on a weekly, monthly, whenever it happens, I don't know.
This quarterly staff awards page is not part of this.
Oh, this is not, okay.
This is not part of it. This is just something extra I put in to talk about a little bit. That, that is not part of that quarterly staff awards. It's really just those items on the, um.
I do think.
Definitely agree, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, beyond that should be recognized, almost celebrated.
And I think it goes well with teacher appreciation week. It kind of all ties in, which we've got some timeliness coming because that's a many.
Something.
And then, so then, and then pick the right forum, then we do that and, and whatever, you know? Because then you'll see some of our staff will have the five, ten, and fifteen, all the plaques in there, wherever, you know?
There are some schools that when you've been there twenty-five years, your plaque goes on the wall.
Sure. That type of aspect, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if I'd do that for five, but twenty-five, I would, you know? But as a judge, I'll also say twenty's the right time to do that.
And if you want to do that, that would be your, this is just a shell of what we talked about with communication.
But what I heard is every five years, some sort of recognition.
So, do we need like to approve that maybe we want a five, a five-year recognition program? Or are we just having a discussion that, uh, remind you to our admin team that's probably already doing it, you're doing great stuff there, but we'll also provide some recognition at the school board level for the milestones?
What would you suggest?
I would suggest, I'm gonna five, ten, fifteen, because we didn't do anything last year and I couldn't tell you who's been here five years, ten years.
Yes, sir.
Do some research on that. You know, at Mr. Bear, we got the best for the last. How long have you been here, huh?
Eighteen years.
Okay, so two years, right?
Yeah.
Do you have, you have all that data, right?
Simon probably left you a chart, Carl.
Oh, it's on my PR or my.
I was talking to Heather Bligh today and she couldn't remember if she's been here five years or six years today.
Yes, I agree.
And it kind of, years, two seasons ago, and stuff, and sometimes it is kind of, but I do think teacher appreciation weeks in May, that's the end of the year, kind of celebrate the end of the year, what you accomplished, so.
If I told you, would you do, you know, a lot of things, then you might, your retirement visa as well, so it kind of goes to full. Some of them don't like to announce until after the school year, which is, they get.
I've had some give me the reservation the last day of school and said, don't tell anyone, talk to the. Yeah, because they just want no fanfare.
I do like the idea of formalizing as a school for our responsibility to honor those that have. So, we need to put that in some kind of format.
I think it's the Communications Committee and the board together working towards those goals and tasks.
Twenty-one cats that approve establishing a staff recognition program at five-year intervals.
Five-year intervals, absolutely.
I want to make a motion to that.
I'll make a motion to approve a staff recognition, um, uh, schedule protocol, um, in five-year increments for our staff, um, heads.
Second. Questions or further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Um, school perceptions alumni survey.
Last month on my report I presented, I was speaking of school perceptions of all, a survey for senior exits and postgraduate survey, um, it's been a discussion item here and there over time. It's maybe good to get their feedback and they got a little, I'm more interested in ones that have been helped for a year and a half than their experience, but, you know?
I know, I emailed you about that. I didn't know that some of you, that a little bit of this could actually compete with minds rather than being two separate things, paying cost savings, but be, because, you know, they might be like, we just build this one up, you know? So, just a thought, but they are the experts.
Well, they are right on with our percentages for the referendum and I think the senior exit survey keeps them in contact with that person to get the one later.
Correct.
That's their, that's their catch.
Yeah, you know, and they can't use their semester full email address because those get deactivated shortly after.
This is something I've been looking for, since I've been on the board, you know, what survey, yeah.
Love it.
We actually did use school perception for this exact survey, um, previously.
How long, when was that?
Um, five, six years ago.
How did, how did, so, I like survey, I like this. I don't want it to be the smartest survey on the shuffle. How would you use it?
Well, I think, well.
How would you use it to pass?
I, I think it's a really important tool for our staff to use and to look at and that's where we've used it for feedback, um, reflection. As Mr. Lick has mentioned, it was really, really helpful to have senior exit surveys, but more helpful to have the students that were, were helped and had had those conversations with their peers about their school experience. So, the alumni survey, um, I, I think it was even up to five years removed from school. Um, those were some really helpful pieces of information on their.
When you were doing it, were you doing it every year or did you just do it once or how often were you doing it? Why did you get away from that?
Um, I, I don't know where the decision became. I, I normally change superintendents and that's why it changed as a priority. Uh, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I do know that we did use this exact survey and, um, we used it in staff meetings and used it as discussion points. It was another wonderful piece of data, data point that we could reflect on and have conversations about.
So, what were the intervals? Did you do the senior exit and an alumni survey?
Yeah, we did both and I will say that the alumni survey was by far the more helpful one.
And at what interval did you do that?
Because they need to make comparisons to how that information could be applied at the college level. Are they prepared for college level math and, and, and why do they know that's the case? Um, a senior leaving school may not know that their math experiences are yet good and the only thing they can evaluate is the, the time that they have up in that class period. So, that's why these alumni surveys were so much more helpful because they said, I was able to leave school with credits or, uh, move into an advanced track math, uh, I felt more prepared than my peers, you know? Those are the types of questions that we want coming back. A senior just leaving in twelfth grade can't yet answer those questions. It, it may be, it, it's just not the same type of feedback.
So, the survey you had, was that, were they out either a half, were they out five years?
You know, I, I could go back and see if I could find some of that information. I'm not sure. I, I seem to remember it was, it was, it was five years.
And I didn't see it in here, maybe I missed it. Do they have a recommendation on the alumni survey? At what point, years out?
They didn't give me a recommendation last.
The only challenge that we found with the alumni survey was that, uh, school perceptions would lose contact with. And that might have been the reason here now that I think about why we stopped because, um, we did find that the senior exit surveys are extremely helpful. Social media wasn't as far along as it is currently and, uh, so we lost contact with some of those alumni and that was the data we really desired and was most useful. Um, so maybe we weren't getting enough returns and that, and that, so that's why they stopped. But I, I'm not, I think that has completely changed over the last five years or years or whatever.
I think we need to look at how we're doing.
Yeah.
I'm gonna find this helpful as a board member to get that results.
And I wouldn't go far, so far as five years out. I would go more in that two to three-year range.
Well, or, or whatever they're doing after high school. Can we prepare them for life, folks? I mean, if there's a guy who's.
I mean, a couple years.
Just got, one of our graduates just got approved for gas utilities. He's gonna do just fine. And, and, you know, I know him, he's a good guy. I snowballed with him, you know, so kudos to that guy. So, I mean, let's remember that the surveys can help people. Do our business classes, help you manage your checkbook or whatever we all do. I don't know all the curriculums, all same dumb stuff. So, I, I believe it. I think to answer your point, and I agree with Sue, it'll be current data. It's not gonna be artificial intelligence, but it's gonna let us look at stuff. And once in a while, to your point, we might see something that we might make actionable. We might say, you know, now this child, this needs to be in action, go do something about this. Or not. I mean, so that's how we as a school board can make sure at certain times, action is, isn't just, we can make it happen. We can say, you know what, this needs to be followed up on and other stuff might be saying, hey, good job, you guys do a great job, keep doing it.
Well, for example, the staff survey showed us that our area technology was weak, right? I bet this year when the staff survey goes out, technology go way up those scores, right?
No, no, it's not. No way.
He's right, it's testing, but I mean, that was a period of weakness we had and now it's not going to be. So, so how would I use the survey? I, I would use it in similar fashion, so.
I do think it's worth us at least attempting to gather this information and seeing.
We should have a motion.
Motion to move forward with this, yes.
I'll make a motion to, uh, move forward with the alumni survey, school perceptions.
Second.
Further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Oh, fifth grade trees for tomorrow. If I had realized we were waiting, we would have moved.
They gotta work tomorrow.
She did it for the sheriff and that's great.
I've lost you. One more word.
They got all their homework done.
I know, right? I, I did, I lost them on the agenda.
The sheriff, he got moved out, but yeah.
The sheriff has a weapon.
That's right.
Priorities, right.
The sheriff asked, you didn't ask.
Anyways.
Okay, fifth grade trees for tomorrow.
Yeah, this will be our seventh year, we'll have this upcoming year, our year seven, so. We're pretty excited. It's a big class this upcoming year, sixty kids. Yeah, so this will be a, a new challenge for us to fit us all in dorms. And, um, hoping Mr. Hiltz can come with us next year, Mr. Bear also is hopefully going to join us next year, so.
Yeah, we're looking forward. I don't know if you have any question. Right now, we're in the process of starting the fund base.
We're laying some things up in one of the local valley here before.
We got four hundred and four dollars in a short month for the pride pump.
Yep. And your trips are in the fall, correct?
Yes, yes. So, we had a really nice presentation. You have any questions for them?
Yes.
Why do you have to speak as big as wolves, seriously?
No, I, I, it's awesome. I can, in fact, well, I think it's going this year, so let me know if I gotta help you know.
My biggest was the inaugural year and they had to go in the spring because they could only take a date of whatever. Because there was still snow on the ground when they went. And so, falls.
Yeah, it'll be the fall days, those, the last.
But you always say that fall is better because it's like a team building thing.
Yeah, start off the year.
Especially in the rain.
Stacy, she got to adventure in the rain for three days. Did he also canoe in the rain?
That was awesome. We're definitely good sports.
Yeah, the motion approved because it's an overnight field trip, overnight field trip means.
I'll move to approve the, uh, the fifth grade trees of tomorrow proposal.
Second. Any other questions or discussion?
Have fun.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Sorry it waves.
Fine.
What'd you say?
They're fine.
Yeah.
All right, um, we had the letter from Heather Bligh, whose resigning was Jakey Valwell, coach. Can I have a motion on that?
I move to approve Heather Bligh's resignation from volleyball.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Allison Newman's resignation as JV volleyball coach.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation, Allison Newman as the JV volleyball coach.
Second.
And she is moving over to the softball assistant.
And I, please, I just want to thank those two ladies for helping us progress.
Yeah, they've got young families and... Question or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Recognition of the class of 2019, fellas according to senior four.
Thank you, I'll take that one, it's, it's always an honor to work with all of our, our seniors, and they're all a wonderful class, so when I have this opportunity to recognize students, I might want to start by recognizing the entire group, because we're rarely often to have the students that we have. But students, two students have risen to the top of the class through individual effort, and it's amazing to me to see that they recognize the importance of their education at such an early age, and really push themselves to, to reach these levels. Both of these girls are a great example to our entire school and community with the work that they've put in. But Ashley Elson will be named the 2019 Bell Victorian, she's daughter of Lance and Amy Elson, and she plans on attending the University of Wisconsin-Green Bay to pursue a degree in nursing. And Ratika Jandu will be our Salutatorian, daughter of Padhav and Renu Jandu, sorry. Ratika plans on attending this school to pursue a degree in pre-med. Both of our girls.
Okay. Those two ladies. We'll move on then to some first readings and policies, and I usually say for the camera that the school board has had these policies in advance, had the opportunity to read them, which is why we don't go through the process of reading them here, some of them are two and three pages long. These are first readings, that first policy 1460 is a second first reading, we had a first reading, now since there's a change to it, so now we state this one as approval of a second first reading for 1460. Is there a motion?
I move, we approve the second first reading of policy 1460 Physical Examination. Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 0144.1.
I move to approve the first reading of policy 0144.1 Compensation.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 0161.
I approve, I most appreciate, I approve policy 0161 Parliamentary Authority.
Can you add the first reading of that?
First reading of policy 0161.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 0164.2.
Move to approve first reading policy 0164.2 Special Meetings. Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 1213.
I make a motion to approve first reading of policy 1213 Student Supervision and Welfare.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 2131.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 2131 Educational Outcome Goals and Expectations.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 2270.
Move to approve policy 2270 First Reading Religion in the Curriculum.
Second, someone?
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 2412.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 2412 Homebound Instruction Program.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 3120.04.
Thank you. Motion to approve first reading of policy 3120.04 Employment of Substitutes.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 3139 and 4139.
Move to approve policies 3139 and 4139 First Reading Staff Discipline.
Second, anyone?
Second.
And again, those are virtually the same policy, just different work groups. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 4440 Job Related Expenses.
Move to approve first reading of policy 4440 Job Related Expenses.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 5512.
Move to approve policy 5512 Use of Tobacco by Students First Reading.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 5530.
I make a motion to approve first reading of policy 5530 Drug Prevention.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 5630.
Move to approve policy 5630 Corporal Punishment First Reading.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 5870.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 5870 Student Production of Goods and Services.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 6330.
I'll make a motion to approve policy 6330 First Reading Leasing School Property.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 6520.
Move, go ahead. Move to approve first reading of policy 6520 Fable Deductions.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, 6830.
Move to approve first reading of policy 6830 Audit.
Second. Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion, motion carried, sorry. Then we've got that policy 0165.3 to delete.
Move to approve the first reading of the deletion of policy 0165.3 Special Meetings.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Our last item is concessions, the social media contract.
I spoke with Andrew Gribble on this week, I kept, it was Monday or Tuesday, and they threw away much of a decision, because they don't want to keep us as a customer anymore.
They just want to keep us?
They do not want to keep us a customer, no.
Why?
They didn't care for how their interactions were with us, we were during the referendum time, and they thought we were high maintenance, and they liked the part ways. It's okay.
Well, to be honest, we weren't be...
Tell them.
Well, to be honest, we weren't getting our, as much...
We wanted more too, and they...
Yeah, I was certain.
There was a lot of promises that...
But we weren't getting, we weren't getting the things that they...
The graphics were better in other districts that they were serving, we felt, than what we were getting, and so they, I got an email from Heidi saying, oh, no, let's email UC, and I was like, no, but...
It's okay.
Yeah, so it's kind of neutral.
So that contract will end in April, April 11?
Well, we're gonna have to figure out how to manage it then in-house. Right now, all the materials that they produced, we own, and as of April 11, I mean, a good Stephen, so, we've got to work on how we're gonna manage everything going forward then. So that'll come off the table, but...
When I saw the chief inspirational officer, I thought you had an unusual title there.
So the current plan is to manage it in-house?
Yeah.
Do you ever feel that needs assistance, they could, we could...
We're gonna have to have some assistance from that house somehow. Basically, what I'm saying is, we may end up paying someone a stipend, because it's a lot of work, and we may live through this spring with some assistance from some folks, but we've got to get it framed. Because it's kind of, when they reached out...
It's growing responsibility.
Well, when Heidi reached out, said, hey, your contract's coming up April 11, I said, okay, and then I started looking, talking about it, and she said, well, Andrew, I'll get ahold of you, and then Andrew called me at one o'clock on Monday, and, yeah.
So it's okay.
She wasn't inspired by us.
We were not inspired, no.
You know, it was a good exercise to get this off the ground, it helped us...
We probably wouldn't have been renewing either way, I mean, we would have...
We needed the graphics, what we saw other districts receive, we would send them information, and as it was sent, that's how it was posted compared to...
I can show you some examples of other school districts, what they had, because I follow many school districts ages, and there was one compared to...
Well, what made us different than them?
Well, did those schools do the graphics, or did they do the graphics?
Well, we were sold that they did.
They had graphics in their plan. They have like a hundred schools, and so they have various account managers, and so I don't know how many accounts one manages, so it might depend on who you have, who you don't have. I don't know. But we knew who we were getting again, and not getting it.
There were other aspects, you know, there were variant analytics, we, we got feedback saying, hey, this kind of post, this kind of post does really well, you should do more of this kind of post versus this one, which got, what, ten? Things would just get posted that you couldn't even read online, someone would scan something in and send it as a letter, or they'd put it online, we, I couldn't even read it on my computer, because...
They should leave you that information and make it into a post.
So, we didn't get what we bargained for, but it was a good...
That's privacy of the bridge of contracts, I guess.
No, it was one year, yeah.
But it was a good exercise to get us started, and we can manage it in, in-house, and it'll save some... So can I have a motion, one way or the other, on the social media contract?
Well...
Oh, we don't need, and we don't...
If you, there's no motion, just die, because it expires.
All right.
So, it will expire.
That then concludes our regular business for the evening, I'll take a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll move to adjourn to executive session.
I'll take a roll call vote, Jay.
Wait.
Wait, second.
You guys have a second.
Second.
Okay. Aye.
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 Motion carried at nine twenty-two PM.
Where are you leaving from?
Okay, we will call to order at 10:53 PM.
It's on, we, is it on?
Is there a motion for item number one Assistant Track Coach?
I move to approve Ann Forre as the Assistant Track Coach.
Second.